I'd like to call this meeting back to order. We are now on item number five, call to the audience. We have had over the allotted amount of speakers sign up, so I need to ask the board if you would like to move to allow the 16 speakers to go ahead and speak. We would have to waive our policy.
I'd like to make a motion to waive the policy and allow the speakers present the opportunity to speak.
Second. All right. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It is approved. I'll try to speak up over the noise in the hallway. The first speaker to sign up is Dustin Mintern.
Members of the board, as a parent of two elementary school students and for the parents of the other 33 elementary school students in our neighborhood known as the Commons, which is planning block 277, we have several concerns with the proposed redistricting of our neighborhood. The proposed changes of option 3D do not seem to align with the guiding principles set forth by the Board of Education. The first concern is close proximity. Currently, our planning block is less than a mile and a half bike ride to Parsley's rear entrance, which is on Ike Drive. That's all within 25 mile an hour speed limit roads, roads that have pretty wide shoulders, you know, roads that I feel comfortable biking with my children to school with. Moving us to Holly Tree would make us have over twice that distance. It would put us on roads with at least 45 mile an hour speed limits, just making it impossible for me to bike to school with my kids anymore. So that's one big concern, and even driving will take over twice as long, putting us out onto some major roads, either College or Myrtle Grove. Another is to consider the economic, cultural, and ethnic diversity. Our planning block may not have a lot of free lunch students and stuff, but our planning block has some of the most affordable houses in Parsley School District. When you pull it up on real estate maps, ours is one of the only areas that have houses for sale under $300,000, making our neighborhood more of a working-class neighborhood with both parents working, whereas most of the other areas are houses for sale much higher than that. So taking us out of that would make Parsley more of a higher-income elementary school, which, you know, I know isn't one of the goals of the board. Another is to minimize our impact on the students. Under 3D, our children would be moved to Holly Tree, forcing them to get to know all new faculty, staff, so forth, and currently, at least my children, go to the YMCA program that's offered at Parsley, whereas at Holly Tree, there is no after-school program offered, you know, on campus there, so our children would have to get used to being bussed around after school before we can come pick them up from another after-school program. And then finally, the biggest concern to us now that we realize Parsley is not really an option, it seems, is that the feeder patterns for our particular neighborhood seem to really be disrupted. Currently, 100% of Holly Tree students turn and go to Roland Grice for middle school. However, under 3D, our children would go to Holly Tree and then to Myrtle Grove, while 79% of their peers still go to Roland Grice. They would be in, you know, a very small minority of kids that end up transferring down to Myrtle Grove, and then when they transfer from Myrtle Grove, they'll be part of, again, a minority of 37% that go from Myrtle Grove to Hogard. So it makes it, you know, kind of the most disruptive, you know, pattern that I could really see keeping our kids going to Myrtle Grove. So basically, we ask that if we can't, you know, stay in Parsley as we wish due to the reasons that I've mentioned, at least move us to Roland Grice so that our children can go, you know, to school with the majority, you know, of their peers throughout their school careers.
Thank you. I do apologize. Let me back up for a minute and announce that each speaker is limited to three minutes. Time does not permit dialogue between the board and the community. While the board welcomes residents to share their views, the chairman does retain the right to limit discussions on a particular topic when such comments become slanderous or personal in nature. Tamika Devone? Devone here? Tamika Devone, D-E-V-O-N-E.
Good evening. Thank you for giving us the opportunity to address issues of extreme importance for the veteran bus drivers of New Hanover County. There's no secret concerning the drastic shortage of bus drivers in our county as well as other counties. Incentives in the form of increased salaries for beginning drivers have been made at the expense of disregarding the veteran drivers. Our veteran drivers have been carrying the torch for years in all types of weather with increasing pressure from all sides and under extenuating circumstances. Yet, we do our job and we do it well. Some drivers have been driving professionally for over 20 years only to see our pay digress. For example, a veteran's driver who was employed 15 or more years were paid $16.65 hourly for this school year and were only given a 16-cent raise, while the beginning drivers' pay increased by 59 cents to $14 hourly. For the 2014-2015 school year, a driver who worked for 30 years, their beginning-to-end salary increased by only $6.82. A pay scale change caused a decrease from 30 years to 15 years. That same driver maxing out with only $3.24 increase for 15-plus years. Now, another new pay scale for the 2019-2020 school year, with the same driver's salary amounting to $2.81 increase for 15-plus years, a continual digression of pay. Over the years, we have seen incentives once valuable to drivers such as bonuses and tenants' pay become obsolete. Whether we take students to and from school, competition sporting events, or different field trips, we deserve to be paid properly. However, in all our efforts to cover sometimes on a daily, weekly basis, two and three extra runs, some are paid overtime while others are only afforded comp time that just sits on the books with rules as to when and how that pay can be used. With comp times daily accumulating, we are yet called upon to cover the absent drivers or make up for the shortage of drivers. The question is, what incentives are you going to make available to the veteran drivers of New Hanover County, especially since the parents, students, and the New Hanover County school system are depending on us? The late, great Maya Angelou said it best, "I learned that people will forget what you say, people will forget what you did, but people will never forget how you made them feel." How we treat people matters, and I'm not alone when I say I take my job seriously. It is an honor and a privilege to serve the students of New Hanover County schools, but frankly, it's a shame what we get paid. It is time we get paid for the professional job that we do. Thank you.
Carson Reed.
Hi, my name is Carson Reed, and I'm the PTA president at Forest Hills Global Elementary School, and I have a son there, Burke, he's in third grade, and he's been going there since he was in kindergarten, and I have another son there who just started kindergarten this year. And I want to start out by saying that we love Forest Hills so much, we love our teachers, oh, they're right here! We love our administration, we love our, all the students and parents and everyone who goes there, and we just want to make sure that we keep that community and keep it a close-knit community that we have. And I know that you guys have already made some shifts and some decisions that is going to change some things, and we appreciate that very much because what we're here tonight to talk about is that we know that MAP 3D is going to take our school over capacity, and we do not want that to happen. We're trying to protect our students because we are a D-rated school. We are one of the four lowest-rated schools in New Hanover County, and we believe that if you overcrowd our school, take it over capacity, that that's going to take away the resources for our students. It's not good for the students that are going to get moved in, and it's not good for the students who are already there, so we are trying to protect that. We know that MAP 3D, it not only takes us over capacity, but is also going to bring in more at-risk students. So we already have an at-risk population, and so if you bring in more at-risk students, then that takes away the resources that we are giving each individual student. We strongly urge you to reconsider taking Forest Hills over capacity. We understand that almost all schools in New Hanover County are either already over capacity or will go over capacity with MAP 3D. However, what we want you to keep in mind is that Forest Hills is one of the lowest-performing schools, and our administration, our teachers, our parents, our community tries every day to help those students and to get out of our D-rating, but I don't think it would be wise to overcrowd our school because I don't think that we would be able to do that if that happens. So, thank you. That's all I have.
George Vassits.
Good evening. My name is George Vassits, and I am the education chair for New Hanover County NAACP and a retired public school teacher. I'm speaking today to express our concerns about the proposed redistricting plan. We had hoped that when the board adopted as one of its principles for redistricting to consider economic, cultural, and ethnic diversity, real improvements would be forthcoming. However, an examination of the proposal, which you're about to vote on, shows little change. It continues the economic and racial segregation of the past period. This plan fails to meet the expectations that our schools will provide as written in our state constitution, and I quote, "uniform system of free public schools wherein equal opportunities shall be provided for all students." 65 years ago, the Supreme Court ruled unanimously that segregation is inherently unequal in a suit filed by the NAACP. What was true then is true today. Furthermore, we know, furthermore, what we know is that schools with diverse student bodies do a better job of serving all our children, black, Hispanic, white, than do segregated schools. This is backed by a myriad of studies and by my own personal experience. For 20 years, I had the honor of teaching at a high school ranked by the Washington Post as the most diverse in the DC area. It was also one of the top 300 high schools in the country. I doubt what I and others say here today will sway your vote and that you will send the proposal back to the drawing boards, but I want to remind you that you were elected to represent the entire community and to uphold our laws and our constitution. I hope you will listen to the other voices on behalf of our children who, under this plan, will continue to be denied equal opportunities in our schools and that you will begin to rectify the situation. Thank you.
Brian Banks.
Good evening. So I'm Brian Banks, and I'm here on behalf of the families in the Masonboro Forest neighborhood. We understand you guys have a difficult job in a process like this. It's nearly impossible to please everybody, but we do appreciate the efforts of the redistricting committee and the opportunity to speak today. It's been tough for many in our neighborhood to wrap our heads around the changes proposed for our community, and in particular, a change in the latest map revision. Before the latest MAP 3D, the plan was for our children to be switched from Parsley to Holly Tree Elementary, and then they would matriculate with all their classmates to Roland Grice. So we were stunned to see that the latest map showed that our children would not go to Roland Grice with the rest of their class. They would be split from their class again to attend Myrtle Grove. One of the guiding principles for redistricting is to minimize impact on students, but if the MAP 3D is approved as is, the students of Masonboro Forest would be impacted twice. First, they'll be separated from their friends and community at Parsley, and then they'll be separated from their cohort again when they go to middle school. Middle school's hard enough as they learn to navigate a whole new stage of growing up with all the social issues middle schoolers face these days, and it's hard even with established friends, but to go to a new middle school without your friends and community, that's not an ideal situation. So our ask, as you finalize the redistricting plan, is to switch Masonboro Forest back to feed into Roland Grice Middle School so that our kids are only impacted during the redistricting once. We understand this amendment is included in the committee recommendations PowerPoint that will be presented, I think, later, but we support the amendment. It would mean a lot to our community. Maybe a small change on the map, but it would make a big difference to the community. So thank you.
Dallas Brown.
Good evening, members of the board, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Dallas Brown. I'm the president of the local North Carolina Association of Educators. NCA is committed to schools with equal access to a quality public education that is adequately and equitably funded. MAP 3D has not met your guiding principle of economic, cultural, ethnic diversity. It further marginalizes the children of color in this community and creates concentrations of poverty within our inner-city schools that are already overwhelmed because of their high number of students with high ACEs scores. This is unacceptable. Over the half, over half of our elementary schools in this county qualified for Title I funding this year. Nine are within city limits and have consistently been labeled as failing schools, yet have the highest ethnic, cultural, and economically concentration of systematic poverty and isolation. MAP 3D shows that two schools with D scores being at 69% and 84% children of color, and the F school is at 90% children of color. The North Carolina 2019 school report card reports that students at the F school were proficient upon entering kindergarten was at 4.3%, with the rate of 95% economically disadvantaged students, whereas kindergarten students entering Ogden Elementary School were 69% proficient and economically disadvantaged students at 18.3. This map is irresponsible and perpetuates segregated schools. We are asking this board to support the Community Conversations proposal, which includes the implementation of a community school model beginning with the 2020 school year. We are asking the school board to make this process a priority when you begin the budget process for 2020, 2021. Neighborhood schools will work only when our Title I schools have the support and resources provided under the community school model. The neighborhood is all of New Hanover County. Thank you.
Lori Wilson.
Hello. My name is Lori Wilson, and I am a privileged white person, just like most of you on the board. We went to A-rated schools. We never feared that we would not attend college or that we wouldn't have a job. Today, I am blessed to work as a grant writer for a nonprofit that offers affordable programming for families who need a safe place for their children after school. Most of these families live in neighborhoods where poverty is high and support is low. Neighborhoods where we have seen shootings this week, neighborhoods where young girls are taught they are not enough. These are the areas where we see Title I schools, where, under this redistricting proposal, the Board of Education has set nearly all high-risk and at-risk children. Children whose parents find themselves caught in a narrative designed to keep them poor and underserved simply because they're a person of color or because they were raised in a certain neighborhood. There is no world where any child attending a school with majority ACEs children will naturally receive the support they need and the support they deserve, not without action and not without resource development. We did well, all of us, because we went to schools with parents who had the time to demand a good education, the privilege to speak out, and the financial security to donate money. We can't expect Title I families living in Title I neighborhoods to do the same. We and you, the Board of Education, have to provide this in another way. We're demanding dedicated grant writers for these Title I schools so they can receive additional programs and services that require funding and support. Funding and support that many financially secure, often white, parents can give at non-Title I neighborhood schools. We also require resource development professionals to identify strategies for funding when grant writing is not enough. If we do not provide this to Title I schools, we are complicit in allowing these young kids to suffer and to grow in a narrative of self-hate, inequity, and in the most extreme cases, crime and injury. The Board of Education must establish a plan, provide community schools, or I'm sorry, community support for Title I schools. Neighborhood schools will not work. Community schools with resources distributed equitably can. I stand with Rebecca Tremmel of Community Conversations and many other leaders who are here tonight to demand for additional resources during school hours at Title I schools. I support Community Conversations, and with their team, I will hold the Board of Education accountable to create a more equitable plan. Thank you.
Emily Glennham.
Good evening. My name is Emily. I live with my husband Trey and my daughter McKenna, who will be entering kindergarten here next year. What brings me here tonight is my great concern for the black and brown children of New Hanover County schools. Every one of the redistricting plans offers hyper-segregation and isolation to the minority student. I echo the voices here tonight to pause the vote to confirm Plan 3D. We all see that the current plan perpetuates segregated and unequal schools and the multitude of racial inequities that are already impacting our students of color. Today, you have in your hands a plan to change this reality. I support the proposal submitted to the board by the Coalition of Community Members and Leaders here tonight. I uplift the fourth commitment regarding ongoing sustainable professional development of training in implicit bias and cultural competency, the lack of which is causing indisputable harm, disparities, re-traumatization, and leaving students' needs unmet. I am the parent of a black child by adoption, and I have come face-to-face with the questions that parents of black children have asked for ages. Will my child be affirmed for who they are? Will their teachers see the potential they inherently possess? Will they be overly and unfairly disciplined and enter the path of the school-to-prison pipeline? Will they be denied access and opportunities that will impact the rest of their lives? Will they be discriminated against, misunderstood, and reprimanded based on implicit bias, regardless of intention? Will they be humiliated and dehumanized by being forced to play a slavery game with classmates? Will these effects and others compound to block the path of success for our children and their very self-worth? With segregated schools, a lack of cultural competency, and unchecked implicit biases, the answers to these questions remain imminent and extremely troubling. The Community Conversations proposal is in the best interest of all our students in New Hanover County, every child. We all lose, we all miss out on something indescribably special when we live in separate worlds, when we refuse to learn from one another and seek the equitable success of every child. As Deborah Maxwell often says, "The neighborhood is New Hanover County. To accept anything less is unacceptable and irresponsible." We call for the accountability and action of the board to meet the needs of all of our students and to not remain content and complicit with an unjust status quo. Thank you.
Kevin Hennessy.
Good evening, board. My name is Kevin Hennessy. I live in Bay Shore Estates off of Market Street. First, I want to begin to talk about busing. As Ken Nan said, we're short 18 drivers on any given day. Why would we want to create more routes, more buses through redistricting when we can't even provide busing now sufficiently? What are you going to do if 25 drivers don't show up? How are you going to triple up routes? I mean, what time are kids going to get to school? If that happens, they need to be paid. I would be happy to pay for a bus for the day and have you guys come. I'll buy you lunch, I'll pay for the driver, I'll pay for the gas, to take the route from, the proposed route from Bay Shore down Market, down Gordon, to North College, all the way to Holly Shelter, 15 miles during the rush hour that these kids are going to be going in, there and back. It's going to be an hour plus each way, not even counting on the traffic that's on there, the construction they're doing on Market Street, and accidents that'll happen every day as soon as there's an inch of rain. That's going to happen. Now, on to this, the residential thing that you guys are going to talk about tonight. Three things that you fall short on, in my opinion. One, close proximity. Bay Shore is two miles from Noble. They're 15 miles from Holly Shelter by bus. Where is the reality in that? Why does that make sense? I just don't understand. Tide Trail is the first street off Bay Shore coming into Bay Shore. Lost Tree is the opposite of that where I live. Kids are going to be going to Noble from Tide's Trail, but not from Lost Tree where I am. My daughter could walk 50 feet to get on the bus to go to Noble, but she has to go 15 miles to go to Holly Shelter instead of two miles to Noble. That does not make sense. Secondly, minimize impact on students. A bus ride from an hour and 15 to an hour and a half each way, not taking into account, like I said, the construction of Market Street, unacceptable. Third, consideration of economic, cultural, and ethnic diversity. Noble, there is none. No difference, except it goes up 1% and whites going to the school as opposed to anything else. So where is the diversity there? Why make such a drastic move and pull Bay Shore out if you guys weren't going to change it? The recommendations that the Cropper Report and the board don't address the impact that it's going to have on the students. Just take the bus ride with me from Bay Shore to Holly Shelter, just to start. 30 seconds, okay? You need to postpone this vote until more due diligence can be done. I mean, we have till August. It's not like we have to rush and get it done before the end of the year. There are millions, if there's millions of dollars in an emergency fund, we could put trailers at schools, compensate for the overcrowding, and make room for everybody until more funds come available to enlarge and to expand these schools. Losing my train of thought. You guys have a tough job. It isn't time to vote on this yet. Postpone it until you can do further due diligence.
Pandora and Quimari.
Hi, my name's Ben.
Hi, my name is Bandoian Karmari. I'm the grandson of May Rachel Freeman. She served on this Board for many years. I served the United States Army from 2011 to 2017, earning the rank of Staff Sergeant. My military occupational specialty was 11 Bravo Airborne Infantry. My grandmother stood for equality for all children regardless of race, creed, or economic status. About 24% of people in Wilmington live below the poverty line. The national average is 14%, which is unacceptable for the development, for the most developed nation in the world. I grew up on 19th and Anne, just down the street from a family who was sleeping on the floor, who had no toilet paper, who had no food, and the lights were not on. This is still going on in New Hanover County every single day. How can a child focus on their education, but they're living like that every single day? The Board of Education's job and responsibility is to ensure that these needs are met. You guys are paid elected officials. And you guys don't have to worry about that. You don't go into the homes, or go see the parents, or go to the schools and think about those things. It is the responsibility of this Board to ensure that equal educational opportunities for all students regardless of the neighborhood they belong to are being met. I implore you not to be complicit in this unequal education of New Hanover County students. Listen to the needs of the community that you are to serve and provide equal education for all students, not just for those certain neighborhoods. I'm here with Community Conversations and representing the National Black Leadership Caucus Southeastern Region. Thank you.
Mevin Boyd.
Good evening, Dr. Markley, School Board members. My name is Mevin Boyd. I'm the Director of the Resiliency Task Force, which is made up of about 100 organizations and over 600 individuals. For two years, we have worked to address the greatest health crisis of our time. ACES, adverse childhood experiences like abuse, neglect, and violence. ACES are linked to every negative health outcome imaginable, from heart disease, cancer, to early death. We are grateful to New Hanover County Schools' partnership in our work. The Task Force also looks at a second series of ACES, called adverse community environments, like poverty, racism, and lack of affordable housing. These stressors exacerbate already-existing trauma. Children living in poverty are more likely to experience frequent and intense adversities. In the absence of protective factors, this toxic stress changes a child's brain architecture, resulting in emotional disorders and cognitive deficits. Continuing to segregate schools by race and socioeconomics, despite the scores that you know and you've seen over the last decade, will make the Board complicit in creating yet another adverse community environment. To district this way is to consciously and purposely add stress to these children and cause poor lifelong health outcomes. Desegregating the schools is the best solution for all children. However, if you, as a Board, are unable to approve maps that achieve this goal, then drastic changes to equalize the playing field must be implemented. Profound investments to counter the proven negative effects of concentrating children with trauma and poverty. Additional social workers and counselors are imperative. One social worker per 50 students should be the minimum ratio at high-poverty schools. Reducing class sizes is vital to these children's success and also vital to the health and well-being of teachers and staff overburdened with secondary trauma and burnout. There are two choices you have. Redrawing the maps to create equitable distribution of students from all backgrounds or providing high-poverty schools with significant, meaningful resources to educate all children for success in life. Anything short of that is unacceptable.
Kim Huffam.
Good evening. My name is Kim Huffam, and I'm the President/CEO of the New Hanover County Tourism Development Authority. Thank you, Board, for allowing me to once again address you this evening in regards to the school calendar. As I had previously shared with you, as one of the county's largest industries, travel and tourism is also one of the area's largest employers that relies heavily on summer labor force. It was reported this morning at the Wilmington Chamber of Commerce Economic Scorecard Presentation that leisure and hospitality jobs have increased 30% since 2010, the largest growth of any industry here in New Hanover County. We thank you, as an industry, for your consideration at your last meeting of our request to revisit the proposed school calendar. We look forward to working with you and providing any additional information to achieve a calendar that preserves the month of August as well as being beneficial to education here in New Hanover County. Thank you.
Sean Bynum.
As you said, my name is Sean Bynum, and I just want to speak about school districting from a parent's perspective. I'm the father of four young girls, 13 years and younger. They're in middle school and elementary school, and each one of my girls have experienced racism in their school. Each one of my girls have come home complaining about such things, and as a parent, I felt it a duty to take my kids out of an environment that would be damaging to them for not only now, but for the future as well. So I encourage you all to consider the redistricting, on how you're redistricting, the segregation, and think about not only the ethnic diversity that we say that we're at of, but the future impact of all of our children when they experience such negative things in their school. And I also encourage you all to consider the amount of minorities that we have in leadership position in our schools, on the middle school level, on the elementary level, on the high school level. Minority kids' success rate drastically increased when you have minorities in leadership in their school, when they could see someone that looked like them. And for a parent who has been a transplant to this community for three years, I find one of the greatest things that we fight with on a daily basis in our homes and in our communities is our schools. We have to be very considerate and very intentional about how we redistrict and how we district our schools, because not only do the lives of our children, not only are their lives at stake, but the mental health and the stability of our community are at stake. Consider this as you think about the people who grow up in our school system. Do we want them to stay, or do we want them to leave? Do we want transplants to be a part of a vibrant community, or do we want transplants to flee from a community that they want no parts of? So as you consider this, take the time to think about the impact that it has on our children for the future and beyond. Thank you.
Rebecca Tremmel.
Good evening, everybody. If you're with me tonight and you stood up here at this podium to speak, or if you're just with me, would you please stand? Thank you. I stand with you tonight. I actually stand with everyone tonight because I believe that the choice before us is a false choice. It's not a neighborhood school choice or a busing choice. It's not even an option on the table because we don't have the busing to do it. But we do have the opportunity to create a system that works for everyone, and I believe that that plan is in front of you tonight. We can have neighborhood schools in New Hanover County if the schools work for everyone when we have a community school model in place as well as the neighborhood school philosophy. When we have a community school, that means that the poverty that Dorian spoke about is addressed, and it needs to be addressed because until you Maslow, you can't bloom. And that's what we want to see. I want to see that there are kids who can get to school easily. I want to see that win for them, but I also want to see minority children have a chance for the first time in this county, have a chance to succeed. There's another dark side to this. If we proceed with this plan tonight, if this vote goes through tonight, it's not a win for anybody right now. Maybe you guys can come up with a plan in 30 days, or maybe you could, we would like for you, Community Conversations would like for you to respond within 30 days of what we've presented before you, a plan that addresses these things. We want to see a grant writer to provide for these things. We want to see community advocacy happen. We want to see more social workers. We want to see Title I schools thrive because it can. I know that there is hidden treasure buried in those kids, and it's time for them to come out. And it can, and we can do that. But I'm asking you to pause this vote. If you go forward with this tonight, you're going to say resoundingly, "This is a vote against their best interest? It is unacceptable? And we would be complicit in perpetuating systemic racism?" This house is on fire, and I see children on the top floor, and this house is on fire. Their destinies are being incinerated as we speak because of this plan. But we can do something about it. We can have community schools, and we can all win together. Isn't that the goal? If you go, don't go forward with this vote tonight, guys, because if you do, even if you respond in 30 days with a plan, you have still decided that black children sit on the back of the bus. We're afterthought, again. Maybe you come up with something, maybe you don't. We can't wait anymore to hope that you guys do the right thing. Do the right thing tonight. The right time to do the right thing is right now. Please pause the vote.
Meredith Brown.
Hi, I am Meredith Brown. This is my husband Wayne, and we are here on behalf of part of Longleaf Hills neighborhood. We're three streets that are across College Road, so we actually sit on...
Pine Valley side.
The Pine Valley side. And our three streets have been redistricted to Winter Park, or are on the plan to be redistricted to Winter Park. It affects like eight kids and maybe six families. Four of those kids will be going in their fifth grade year to Winter Park instead of finishing out at Pine Valley where they started. Two of those kids will be entering third grade during testing at a new school. We are able to walk to school or ride bikes to school. It takes us all of like five minutes to drive the kids to school or pick them up. And then to try to get to Winter Park is crossing College Shipyard Oleander. There's no opportunity for our kids to walk to school or bike to school and get some energy out in the morning or on the way home. And we feel like that is not good. And then one of the other children also that's entering third grade, she has been with the MTSS counselor and in an anxiety group. She had a really rough first grade year and fell behind, so second grade, she's been climbing back up to be at grade level, and we feel pulling her from where she's at and comfortable and improving and moving her to a new school would not be good for her education. I think that was it. Thank you.
Mary Baggett.
Good evening. I appreciate having the opportunity to speak about the school calendar. I know that's not going to be on this agenda tonight, I've been told, but since I'd signed up, I felt like it was my obligation to be here and speak with you so that I could let you know. As a business owner and operator in a county that is so dependent on tourism and hospitality, we feel very much that we need to look back at our history of this county. Luther Jordan, who was one of our finest state senators in the North Carolina State Legislature, was the one who wrote and sponsored this bill to change the community, the North Carolina laws, to have traditional schools start after August 25th. When I came to work in my family business, we were, schools were starting on August 1. That meant teachers were back in school on July 15, and consequently, we were in an unbelievable situation. August is a month that is extremely warm and hot, as everyone knows. We also are aware, whether we want to believe it or not, global warming is happening, and consequently, the heat index has improved, has increased dramatically. Consequently, I think that this is a rash decision to look at this and not look at the whole picture because you have a lot of parents in this room and a lot of children in our county that will be entering in kindergarten, and they will be getting on a school bus, our Thomas Buses that are made in North Carolina, which is a wonderful product, but we're ending up with them riding on a school bus in extreme heat if the school change is occurring. We've offered suggestions, but we were not included on the school calendar committee. There was no one representing tourism industry on that committee to study school calendars, and we all volunteer right here before you to be a part of the committee to help discuss these many options that are available. You could start school 15 to 20 minutes earlier, have school go 50 minutes later in the day, and you could start school on after Labor Day and be out of school before Memorial Day. So consequently, there are lots of options available, and I think that the study of this needs to be done. You also need to be conscious of your energy costs because to air-condition a school in August, which means you're starting to air-condition it in July, because of the faculty having to be on campus to get ready for school year, you will end up with an energy bill that will be absorbent compared to energy cost of operations that you've already had established in April, May, and June. So, thank you very much. I appreciate this opportunity. I look forward to working with you all.
Susan Bullock.
Good evening. I'm Sue Bullock, and I'm here representing the Wrightsville Beach Chamber of Commerce and other businesses from our county beaches. I want to thank you for taking the calendar issue off the agenda and putting it off in terms of an earlier start and rethinking the issue. I was here last month. I'll be here next month when you do this again. We appreciate your taking the time to do research and really look at this issue because it has many impacts along many stratifications of our county. If you're going to do research, we would love to have you do it on a professional basis. We work with all groups. We'll help you fundraise. We'll help you find the right resource. But if we're going to move the calendar year and change the dates, it ought to be done based on real research, not Survey Monkey that you find out which Kit Kat bar is better or whatever. But we're here to help. We thank you for your taking the time to rethink this issue and come back with a better plan, and we'll be here in January to hear what that is. Thank you.
That is all for call to the audience. Moving on to item number six, administrative personnel.
None at this time.
Item number seven, head start. Mr. Bowyer.
Good evening, fellow board members. Here for the annual, annual, the monthly Head Start report. Item A, enrollment. Our enrollment numbers are steady at 260, as you can see. We have 113 three-year-olds, 147 four-year-olds. I will also remind you guys, this is the month for the in-kind contribution report, so I have to do that at the end. Just to give you a heads up on some of the things we're doing, ho, 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 all families received information on the Salvation Army Christmas Assistance Program and how to apply. Several families were signed up for Shop With A Cop, Make A Child Smile and the Catholic Charities Program. Raising A Reader Parent Group met this month. Parent Health Committee scheduled for parents, staff, and professionals to get together to learn more about their child's health needs. You can't really teach a kid unless they are healthy. In-house teacher observations went through this month. New teachers to Johnson Pre-K observed in model classrooms, followed by reflective thinking and collaboration with each other and with the administration. Get feedback on their performance. Connecting the dots between Head Start learning domains and creative curriculum continues with lead teachers. The dental mobile unit provided services for 44 of our students. Best smiles in the county. Ten families have been signed up for the NC Nourish Program and the Policy Council Meeting is Thursday, December 12th at 5:00 PM at the Dale Spencer Building. All right, Appendix B, our monthly budget expenditure report is, just as a reminder, we are always one month in the rear. Our fiscal year starts later and so we are on target, even though it might look funny to some of you to meet our budget goals. And item C, Appendix C, Head Start Expenditure In-Kind Report for May 2019, I'm sorry, for May 2019 through April 2019. Our school location payroll was $204,796.66. Utility expenses of $40,630.34. Maintenance of $8,787.46 for a total expenditure from the county. Thank you very much for $254,214.45. And this is not actual money that the county spent, but this is an estimate of what the county would spend. This was not a check. It was a expenditure that we provide for Head Start. And it's just a quarterly requirement of Head Start that we have to go ahead and report this to you guys. Any questions from the board? Ms. Miles, anything to add? Okay. All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Moving on to old business, item eight and item A, elementary and middle school redistricting, Appendix H, Eddie Anderson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Matt Cropper with Cropper GIS Consulting is actually here tonight and will make the presentation on behalf of the Redistricting Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson, members of the board, Dr. Markley. Thank you for the opportunity to be here tonight. I'm here to give you the presentation of the recommendations on behalf of the Redistricting Committee. They have just recently finished up their work and they're, they're bringing forth a recommendation for your consideration. A little bit of background, just to recap on why we're here, why there was a need to redistrict. The district's in the midst of a capital improvement plan. You're, you built a new elementary school, Porter's Neck Elementary. That's opening in 2020, 21 as a neighborhood school, so that school does not have a zone and it needs to have a zone to assign, to populate the school based on neighborhoods that are around the school. There's also to account for increased building capacity with the replacement of Blair and College Park Elementary Schools so that added space needed to be accounted for. And to look, take a look at, comprehensive look at all the schools in the county and see where there may be substantial overcrowding and potentially schools near them that can provide some balance of utilization and provide some capacity relief. And there were several of those, many of those that existed across the county. And then these were to be established in accordance with the guiding principles established by the Board of Education and all of this was expected to take place in fall of 2020, so this upcoming school year, fall of 2020. Guiding principles and talking about some of the rules that the committee was following and as they were looking through evaluating options, they always went back to these guiding principles and the criteria to see, are they, are they getting closer to adherence to these criteria, guiding principles, or are they deviating further away? They are to balance school facility utilization so make sure that there's equitable amount of seats available. In this case, in this county, there's not much space, if any, to, to work with. Your overall utilization is over 100% and so some of your greater schools, the greater utilization is way on the, on the higher side, over 150% utilized. And so, we're trying to make sure that we're balancing utilization among schools so that the greatest, the, the schools that are the greatest overcrowded can get some capacity relief. We're looking at accounting for future growth, so account for increasing attendance in high growth areas. Looking at close proximity, trying to assign students as close to home as possible, trying to minimize the amount of time students have to spend on a bus and things like that, if at all possible. Establish clear feeder patterns and continuity, so tracking and studying the impact on feeder patterns and how, how many students are going from elementary to middle and what percentage of a school is split. What are they currently split? How are they currently split? And how would any option help make that, improve that? Minimize the impact on students to be mindful of how many students are moved and we, we were tracking that the whole time so that we can understand the impacts. And consider economic, cultural, and ethnic diversity. So looking at the demographic composition of the schools and, and try to improve the demographic diversity of the schools, if at all possible. I think it's important to note that these are all guiding principles and as a whole, need to be looked at in their entirety as a whole. No plan's going to be perfect and any plan is going to have pros and cons and strengths and weaknesses as it relates to adhering to these criteria. If you focus only on one element of these criteria, you start to deviate greatly from the other elements. And so, it's most important to, to take a step back and look at the plan or any recommendation or option that's being considered and ask yourself, are we best adhering to the criteria as a whole? You know, the committee did a lot of hard work in trying to improve all elements of schools as it relates to these criteria and they couldn't make it all perfect and they couldn't make it all adhere to these criteria perfectly, but they certainly did a very tough job and explored and spent countless hours working through this. Talking about this committee, there was an 18-person committee that we worked with. They were established by the school board and the district administration, administration. We had stakeholders also, some community members that were a part of the committee, people from different parts of the city had, and county had provided, were at the table to help provide us input and give us input as it relates to areas that they live in. And I think it's important to note that the committee was just one level of community engagement. In addition to the committee and, and working with this community in a transparent process, the public was enabled to follow the process, to participate and, and observe all the meetings and, and also provide feedback, which was studied throughout the course of, of this study. So here we are at the, the December recommendation date. We started in June or actually more like April in preparation, but the, the public process really started, kicked off in July. So we've been working on this process since July and studying alternatives for this county. We developed a lot of materials for, to help support the, the work of the committee and also to help inform the public. We worked with what we call planning blocks, small building blocks for redistricting so that committee members can understand how many students live in these various of small planning blocks as well as members of the public. I think you've heard members of the public reference the planning block numbers, which is what we asked them to do and give us so that we can understand which small area they're coming from and understand a local area, what their concerns may be. We have an online map that's out there and that is, also has the recommendations on it now and this is all, through the whole course of the study, has had the options on there and information that to help support the work of the committee and also to inform members of the public. Committee's work is complete. They met four times since Ju-, since July. One of the meetings did have to get canceled because of the hurricane that was coming into town, but they have spent many hours reviewing materials, countless hours studying the maps, looking at statistics and data. They reviewed eight different variations of the maps from, from the beginning. We started with two maps to share with them and then those maps, they looked at those maps and they really started to modify those. They gave us input that drove changes in the maps. So the committee really, it was, it was in the hands of the committee as they worked through this process, studying input from the public, focusing on their guiding principles and their objectives and, and making hard decisions, knowing that there, we're going to be people who are unhappy and they, they bring a heavy heart with that, but they do know that, that they have to make, they had to make some tough calls to try to, to adhere to our objectives. They looked at all kinds of data and information to help support, looking at how they are adhering to the criteria and I tell the committee, options are draft and so we, we bring this as a draft recommendation and nothing is final until it's approved by the board. The public has been very helpful. Like I said, we've had an open and transparent process through this whole, through the course of the study. Public members were, were able and invited to come watch the committee meetings and observe the committee meetings and after those meetings, we had conversations with committee, public members to hear what they had to say and understand what their concerns were, to make sure that nothing was, was going unnoticed. They had submitted thousands of emails. We had a feedback form and a lot of online comments have been provided that we were studying and sharing with the committee and also making that available to the public. And we posted all the materials that, at, for every committee meeting. Those materials were posted online, in most cases, the weekend prior before, so that, so anybody had the weekend to study the material before the committee meeting began. And we tried to give them as much time to study the committee as well as the public to be informed and understand what was coming up at the committee meetings. And so, we just tried to make everything as open and transparent as possible. We had two public information sessions as well. We opened the process with the public information session to inform the public of what was coming and how they can participate and how they can be active in the process. We had a September 17th public information session where we invited the public to come look at some maps and give us feedback. We had a gallery walk format there. We did a presentation to share an overview of the process and then we invited the, the public to come look at maps in the gym that were taped on the walls and committee members and staff and consultants were there to talk with them and have one-on-one conversations with members of the public. And we had a survey as well to accompany that process so that we can enable as much feedback and input from members of the public as possible. We had about 200 people attend that, that, that session at Snipes Elementary and we had over 800 respondents participate in the survey. So it was a very good input and feedback that was received. In the end, the committee members voted for elementary, middle school option 3D. It was a unanimous decision. They felt like this best adhered to the overall objectives and criteria. And like I said, this is, they, they understand that this is not a perfect plan. What they were trying to do was try to adhere to their criteria and the objectives and try to make improvements wherever they could possibly make improvements from all elements of these, of these guidelines, these criteria, knowing that they could not do it all and they couldn't make everything perfect just because of some of the limitations that exist in the county with housing and where students are located and where the schools are and things like that, how many seats are available. Other things to note, there are a couple of other considerations for the board that were not, that the committee did not vote on or did not, wasn't part of their final vote. And these are to consider moving all areas split off from Holly Tree to Myrtle Grove Middle School to feed into Roland Grice Middle School. This is done in order to achieve 100% feeder pattern for that school to Roland Grice and to resolve a small feeder pattern split. This is something that, that is, the, the committee didn't look at this because they were looking at permanent capacity at the schools. As the school district continues to look at this recommendation, there's, there was a modular, semi-permanent modular building that was put in there last year at Roland Grice that has eight classrooms in it. That wasn't part of our capacity number. So if you account for that, which is, it's a brand-new space that can be used, if you account for that, then these students can fit into that building and, and it would help accomplish 100% feeder pattern for that school. There's another adjustment to consider. It's moving Planning Block 87. It's Figure Eight Island. That is currently not zoned to Porter's Neck and that's one that's recommended to, to improve efficiency. There are no students over there right now, but in case that there are students in the future, it's recommended that that all feed into Porter's Neck Elementary School and Holly Shelter Middle School. The final adjustment to consider for the board, that's, that's, that's in addition to the recommendation, is to consider moving Planning Block 180 to Winter Park Elementary School. That's where they currently go. And Planning Block 150 to Snipes Elementary School, which is where they currently go as well. So it's undoing some of the adjustments that were, that were added to Forest Hills Elementary. In doing so, would help reduce the number of students that would be estimated to go to Forest Hills and bring down that, bring down that utilization percentage that some of the parents and people from Forest Hills had communicated to you tonight, some of their concerns about the high utilization in the recommendation. So those are the three adjustments that, that were not considered by the committee. We don't anticipate the committee having any concerns with any of these three adjustments and, and this is the map that we, that we, the committee hopes that this board considers for approval. And with that said, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions?
Matt, I'd just like to thank you and during the process as well as the other committee members. We did put a lot of time, some of the committee members are here tonight. So there was discussion, you know, originally, we talked about the meetings that we had for the committee, the public was there but not going to be involved, but, but I would say, once we split off and went to the maps, we did incorporate, you know, a lot of the public comment during those meetings as well. So I appreciate everything that you've done. Really want to thank the committee members for everything they did. We took a lot of time out of their, out of their days. I felt we had a, a good committee, a diverse committee. And as you said, it's not a perfect redistricting proposal, but I think we listened to the public and came up with these maps. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve item number A?
I would make a motion to approve map 3D along with the three adjustments that Cropper has proposed to the board.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
I would like to publicly associate myself with all the remarks here made tonight. I, I share the frustration with the lack of diversity in schools. I go to bed with it. I tried, everybody on that committee tried. And, you know, diversity, economic diversity, socioeconomic diversity, it was one of seven principles. It was not the only focus. It was one of seven focuses and everybody, everybody on that committee strove to do as best we could with the blocks that we had. We tried to move one piece here, one piece there to make everything work as best as it could and I believe we did that. We don't live in perfect little lines and perfect little groups, but you all were heard. You were all thought of by every single member of this committee. It's an agonizing decision to have to make and I thank my fellow committee members on the board and the committee as a whole. We really worked at this. It was, it was a tough process.
I would like to say that I came into tonight planning to support the 3D map and after hearing from those of you that stood up, Community Conversation, the proposal that has been put forward, I'm not going to be able to do that. There's been a lot of... There has been a lot of money spent and time. The committee has worked tirelessly and I do want it to be understood that I, I do appreciate all of the time and effort that everyone on the committee put forward. But what I will say, I'm part of the Equity, Diversity, and Inclusion Committee. I serve with Chairwoman Eastep and that committee's been doing a lot of work and there is a lot of effort. there is a lot of effort behind an equitable experience for all of our children. And I believe that we are trying to do the best thing for all of our kids, and this is an incredibly, incredibly complex issue. And I do believe that there are parts of this redistricting, but I agree that I think that we should pause the vote, and let's look at how we can look at community schools as an option. If this is what the lines are going to look like, what are we doing to support our students?[1141.83][1141.83][applause]. I will say this, you know, a year ago, when the Williston discussion first came up, and there was an opportunity to possibly change Williston, one of the first things I brought to Dr. Markley was, hey, what about community schools? They are a good model, and I fully support them, and I would like to know if it would be the will of the board to investigate that option, not necessarily saying we're changing lines, but look at how we can better support all of our students moving forward.[1173.15][1173.15][applause].
I would like to thank Stephanie. I've been feeling this way since the beginning of this process. It's, to me, almost skewed in a certain way, and we haven't looked at the certain areas broad enough, for the future sake of all of our children, because all of our children would benefit from diversity in socioeconomic areas, and this is a proven fact. We need to pause and look. The community school model is a great model, but on the other hand, for all of our children to benefit from diversity, we need to dig deeper into what we're doing. There's other issues that I also have. We have a big transportation problem that repeatedly is not dealt with, and as long as that's not dealt with, this isn't going to work very effectively. Now, there's a state statute that says, if you're within a mile and a half of a school, you should be districted at a school. That's not neighborhood school, that's practicality. But beyond that, that term neighborhood school, I thought that we were not going to use it, and yet Cropper came out, and that was the first thing he said about Porter's Neck. Should be proximity, and beyond that, then you start thinking about other factors. So I am very, I am not going to vote for, in favor of it, and I'm glad that other members of this group, the board, are thinking along the lines of pausing this, so we can get a better fit for the future of our kids.[1261.15][1261.15][applause].
Any other comments?
Well, Mrs. Adams and Justice, did you talk to the committee and share these concerns as they were meeting, so that this is not the first time they've heard you?
This is not the first time. They've known how many people in the community have felt.
Did you, you didn't answer the question?
This is the first.
Well, that is...
Is this the first time, Judy?
And this is not going to be a personal attack on me. In my opinion, and that's that.
Personally, this has been an internal struggle for me for the past week, really the past two weeks. Recently attended the Creed Training Center for Racial Education, Equity in Education, on a Saturday morning, and the more data that we learn, the more we see that there is such an achievement gap between our children of color and our white children, and we have to address that. And the more we learn, the more that we understand, we have to do a better job to serve all of our children. And I'll be very honest with you, I am so grateful that you all came tonight, and spoke up, and stood up, and shared your thoughts.[1343.11][1343.11][applause]. Because, and this, I'm not, I'm not trying to throw anything under the bus, I really am not, and this really has been, over the course of the last week, through the work being on the Equity, on the EDI Committee, there's been a lot of concepts and thought processes that have changed within my head, and I don't do this, I do this with a heavy heart, because I know how much work has gone into this.
This has been a personal struggle for me for the last five months. Actually, that's not true. This has been a personal struggle for me since I was nineteen years old, and I became a minority in my Army unit. I know the value of diversity, and a vote for this map is not abandoning the passion that I have on this issue. I don't see how you can change it with our transportation limitations. All you can do is wait thirty days, and then vote for the same map. We can make a plan, starting right now, to address these issues. I was on the phone with people late into the night, and I'll be happy to do so again, and again, and again, and again, because it's what I believe in. There are no other alternatives. I was at it for five months.
And I'm not trying to discount that. I'm really not. All I'm saying is that I feel that we need to have a plan.
We do.
If these are going to be the lines, what are we doing to support all of our children?
I told, we need a plan. We need a plan, but what, what planning block are we going to move in the meantime? Tell me what planning block that I should move, so it doesn't all fall apart. I would move it in two seconds. I would do it in two seconds. If I could do it, I would do it. I spent the last five months trying to figure out how to do it.
Well, I asked to be on this committee a long time ago. I was not placed on it, so, you know, and even if I had come to the committee meetings, my voice would not have been heard. As you can tell, I have not been listened to in many areas, and this is an area I was passionate about when I was running for office. Even when we were coming up with the guiding principles behind closed doors, I still didn't feel like I was really being listened to, and this is an educational fact. Equity in education benefits all of our kids. This is the future, and to deny our children the chance to have the best opportunity for the future, all of our kids, is very frustrating.
In the meeting that we were in, we were drawing up the points of what we wanted to have it based on. I'm missing neighborhood schools, and I was told that we couldn't do that, because that's a bad word, and it's hurtful.
Yet it's still being used.
So what our other people came up with was the school with the closest proximity to your house, and if I'm not mistaken, that's pretty much neighborhood school.
Judy, just to correct you, when we came up with those guiding principles, it wasn't behind closed doors. Just, just so it was.
Oh, yeah, there was no one there. Yeah, it wasn't behind closed doors. Yeah, but, I mean, it was us, and there was, the media had the right, or anybody could have been there.
Right.
But nobody was, and so that was, that was the conversation we had, so it's not a secret.
I, my husband and I made a decision to move our child this year to a much more diverse school. It's considered a failing school, actually, on paper, but what I can say, when I went to lunch today with my son, and I sit at that table, and I look at the friends that he now has, and the stories he's getting to hear from kids that didn't grow up where he grew up, or look different than he does, that is valuable, and all the research supports that when you have diverse populations, white children that come from affluent families do not suffer, but children of color that have the aces that people talk about will be raised up, and will meet those expectations. So I don't know what the answer is. I know that this county, there are a lot of issues with, our schools are the way they are, because the way this county has been drawn, and where people have lived throughout the years, right? It is a very complex issue. And I, I appreciate all of the parents that have advocated on behalf of their child, because we've had so many parents that have stood up and said, this is what's best for my kid, and that, I'm a parent, I get it. I don't think there, there is never going to be a perfect solution, but what I'm saying is that the one that is being proposed tonight, I do just think we still need to take one more look at it.
And I'm going to say that I think that Nelson has, the committee, David has, Bill has, and they've been looking at it for a month. And what you're saying is, we're going to toss that out the window, and, and try for a month to come up with something else, and I don't think that that is a reasonable solution.
I'm not talking about changing lines, or moving a lot of kids around. I just think, visiting, what is the plan, and actually having a plan that, the entry plan, really for any of our students that are moving, we've talked about this before, my concern is kids that are getting moved to another school. What are we going to do for them when they come into that school? Is there, what are we, what are we suggesting our principals are doing to welcome new students into the school? How do we make it a better environment for the kids to come into? Because it's traumatic for a child to be moved from one school to another, so coming up with those plans, understanding that the schools that are receiving new students, what they will be doing.
So then you delay this for another month, that's going to take away another month to make this plan. So let's put that on the agenda for January, and then let's give a goal, and that's the goal, is January, you have that on the agenda. But we take away another month for everyone to have those plans in place, if we postpone this one more month. And then we take away for the entire county to know, where am I going to be if we postpone this another month?
I understand that.
So.
And it's awful. I mean, it's traumatic to not know what you're doing. There's a, I mean, it's, to sit there as a parent of a child and wonder, you know, I know some people are going to be very upset tonight, all over the county, but nobody wants to sit around and wonder for another month, especially when you're saying, you don't know what lines we even begin to look at. I spent every night with these maps. I didn't see another line.
Do we have a motion in a second? Is there any more discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Opposed.
The motion passes. We will take a five-minute break.